All right, let's start this regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, Illinois on May 7th, 2024. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Gainier.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
We have five present.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regime and justice for all.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut at the minutes of a regular meeting of the council of the city of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, and the minutes of a special meeting held on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, both be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. So usually right now, we would ask if anyone would appear before council. However, I, we have an inkling that there's going to be some people who want to. So therefore, we're asking to change the order a little bit. We have a proclamation to the police department. We would like to read and give some pins to them. Some of them are on duty. We'd like to get them back out onto the street. So if you all could be patient, we're going to start with that. All right. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 39 dedicated members of the Ottawa Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023, and whereas the fallen Ottawa Police Officer Brian Lee Sember was among the fallen heroes in 2022, and added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in 2023. And whereas the service and the sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 36th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2024. And whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 12th through the 18th. And whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. And whereas the law was amended by the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994, Public Law 103-322, signed by President Bill Clinton, directing that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all government buildings on May 15th each year. And now therefore, I, Robert Hasty, Mayor of the City of Ottawa, Illinois, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim that May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week in the city of Ottawa. And I encourage all citizens to publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And I believe, were we going to vote, or are we going to let him give the award?
No, we'll vote first.
We'll vote, okay.
Moved by Mayor Hasty, had a proclamation naming May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as National Police Week in the city of Ottawa be adopted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Gainier, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. So now...
We have some years of service pins to be awarded. I'm going to go through the whole department. The officers that are here will come up and receive their pin. Chief Brent Rolson, 29 years. Right. Captain Michael Cheatham, 23 years. Captain Kyle Boris, 18 years. Sergeant Brendan Donahue, 23 years. Sergeant Robert Nillis, 23 years. Sergeant Scott Harden, 18 years. Sergeant James Bell, 19 years. Sergeant Mark Hoster, 16 years. Sergeant Matthew De Vries, 16 years. Corporal Wesley Pender, 16 years. All right, here's the good one. Corporal Matthew Nedanovich, I screwed that up a little bit with... Sorry about that. Corporal Adam Yupst, 12 years. Corporal Joseph Hilton, nine years. Corporal Andrew McLaughlin, 19 years. Officer Daniel Severo, 19 years. Officer Randy Nelson, 19 years. Officer Stephen Hopkins, 14 years. Officer Jonathan Berninger, eight years. I schooled it before. Didn't help with Matt, though. Officer Brandon Anderson, six years. Officer Cole Clicker, five years. Officer Brent Weedeman, five years. Officer Mason Sardi, four years. Officer Eric Gainier, four years. Officer Christopher Culgin, three years. Officer Kathleen Passini, five years. Officer Tyler Brewer, three years. Officer Carrie Whalen, three years. Officer Andrea Harden, three years. Okay. Officer Charles Hooper, two years. Officer Oswaldo Landros Leon, 11 years. Close? Officer Joseph Jibazinski, 12 years. Officer Joel Smith, seven years. Officer Chandler Kiesling, one year. Officer Marisol Hildigo? Closing now? Officer Andrew Martin, one year. Officer Juan Torano, one year. Osifer, Osifer? Officer Jacob Callahan, 17 years. And our two newest officers, Officer Steve Ramirez and Officer Megan Orsini.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to kind of rework the agenda a little bit. I'm sure everyone would agree it was definitely for a worthy occasion. In regards to anyone wishing to appear before the council, I thought it would be prudent to just discuss what some of the rules are. You're allowed five minutes to speak. We allow up to 45 minutes, all told, so please be respectful of everyone else in the room. And we do reserve the right, if any of the remarks start to become redundant, that we can call your time short. I'm also going to ask, just to kind of keep consistent, is there anyone wanting to appear who is not wanting to talk about OSF? Okay, just wanted to make sure. If someone needed their grass cut, we wanted to make sure we got that out of the way. So anyway, with that said, is there anyone wishing to appear before the council? When you come up, please state your name.
Dawn Trompeter. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Dawn Trompeter, and I'm the President of OSF St. Elizabeth Medical Center. Allow me to address some of the concerns raised in the lead-up to this meeting. Since the announcement, we've been transparent, ready to discuss our plans, the rationale behind every decision, and our ambitious vision for healthcare in Ottawa and beyond. OSF St. Elizabeth takes immense pride in its role within the Ottawa community. That is why we support the YMCA, Chamber of Commerce, Area Tourism, Patient Transportation Services, other non-profits, local schools and sports teams. It is why we're thrilled to spearhead a brand-new hospital, cementing $120 million investment to safeguard top-tier healthcare in Ottawa for generations. Yes, adjustments are being made to bed capacities and service locations. Yet, let's not lose sight of the bigger picture. Residents of Ottawa and LaSalle County will soon benefit from an expertly-designed regional healthcare delivery system where all have access to the healthcare and services they need. These strategic changes aren't just about enhancing medical services, they're a catalyst for economic prosperity today and tomorrow. These adoptions are not just about expanding services, but about addressing previously unmet and underserved needs and reinforcing our commitment to sustainable healthcare practices. Our primary goal is to ensure optimal healthcare access for all. I can confidently say that the new regional model will be well-equipped to meet the needs of the I-80 communities, including Ottawa. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. August Corteagrosa. My name is August Corteagrosa, and I serve as the Chief Executive Officer for OSF Healthcare's Western Region, which includes Ottawa and the I-80 communities. The current Ottawa hospital simply isn't viable. When we say the facility has reached the end of its useful life, here is what we're facing. Its design is a relic of the past, ill-suited to modern healthcare demands, clinical departments are inefficiently arranged, and privacy in patient rooms is sorely lacking. Situated on a flood-prone land, the current location poses ongoing risks. Virtually every aspect of the hospital requires upgrades and replacements spanning structural, architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, safety, security, and communication systems. Renovations would not, would not only be prolonged over a 10-year period of time, but astronomically expensive, likely doubling the cost of building a new facility. In the 12 years since OSF entered Ottawa's community, healthcare has evolved significantly. The region is overbedded, a fact recognized by the state. While others have faltered, OSF is making an unparalleled investment securing healthcare for future generations. We're not just preserving jobs, we're bolstering the local economy with well over 1,000 mission partners, those are our employees, while also providing millions in charity care, community benefits, and donations. As Dawn stated, our commitment aligns with your desire to preserve and enhance local healthcare. That's why we're here today. Our request is simple. Let's defer the formal resolution or decision until further dialogue and information sharing have occurred. Additionally, we extend an open invitation to the community to participate in the public hearing on June 13th. That's where you can learn more about our plans firsthand. Thank you for your consideration and partnering in the safeguarding of healthcare for this community.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is John Armstrong. I'm a lifelong member of Ottawa. One thing about the June 13th request, public hearing, we requested that. If we hadn't met a deadline, there would be no public hearing. So just want to get that straightened out. We requested it as citizens, not the hospital. When they talk about what they're doing, they're talking about the region. They are not talking about Ottawa, okay? Let me give you a little history. With the cooperation of state and local government, industry, business, and the citizens of Ottawa, the community of Ottawa construct, the community hospital of Ottawa was constructed, it cost approximately $8 million in the 70s, okay? In trying to protect this community in 2012, which, when they took over, our hospital board decided to partner with the OSF Health System to sustain Ottawa's hospital operations in the future, okay? In that regard, the board, who's representing this town, gave OSF Health the buildings, the land, and all the equipment. And not only that, $25 million in investable assets. So we gave them the building, the land, the equipment, and 25 million investable assets. Why applaud their proposal to build a new hospital? It should be a full-size hospital, thereby creating jobs and economic opportunities. I have three reasons to give me pause on their current proposal. One is the reduction in services provided to the people of Ottawa, the same services our board sought to protect when they gave OSF all those assets 12 short years ago. Two is the hardship of the employees that will now have to travel, and the economic impact it will have on small businesses in Ottawa when those employees are no longer here to support those businesses. And thirdly, in the future, the detriment that not having a full-service hospital will have on businesses and people looking to locate in Ottawa and the immediate area. Make no mistake, OSF is a multi-billion-dollar business, and their current proposal is being driven by what is in the best financial interests of OSF, not people. What I'm asking is that people take the time to inform themselves what the current proposal really means to the city of Ottawa, its people, the business community, and the surrounding communities that St. Elizabeth currently serves, not only now, but in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Colleen Burns, and I am a resident of Ottawa. I'm a graduate of OTHS and went on to pursue a master's in health administration. That education took me around the country, around the country for work, but eventually, my husband and I decided to move back to our beloved hometown of Ottawa to raise our young family. But I've had the opportunity to work with healthcare leaders in six states, and for more than a decade, I served as a Strategic Planning and Business Development Director for large health systems. One of my specific roles was to lead merger and acquisition activity for the systems, work that included pre-merger opportunity analysis, business and service line planning, and post-merger integration. So when I was first told about the newspaper headlines regarding OSS plans to build a new hospital, I was like most people who initially thought, "That's wonderful for our community." But then, as I read more about what that new facility was actually planned to be, my thoughts quickly changed. Because you see, what OSF is essentially planning for Ottawa is a small-scale psychiatric hospital with a freestanding emergency department and a small ambulatory surgery center. And while the claims of this all being state-of-the-art, it does pose many questions as to how OSF defines that term. Any substantial inpatient service is planned to be moved to Peru, where OSF intends to not only open Peru's shuttered hospital, but modernize and enhance it at levels higher than it was before. Their argument for this in large part is that rural healthcare is dying, which translates to rural providers are losing money and therefore closing. But Ottawa Hospital has operated a multimillion-dollar net profit for years, or net income, since we are not-for-profit in healthcare, unlike St. Margaret in Peru. Ottawa Hospital recently received an A rating from Leapfrog Group, a leader in providing transparency around patient safety and quality metrics. This puts them in the same company as University of Chicago Medical Center, Rush University Medical Center, Northwestern Central DuPage, Elmhurst Hospital, and Silver Cross Hospital, among others in our region. In both 2022 and 23, Ottawa was designated as a Top 10 Rural and Community Hospital in the country by the Charter's Center for Rural Health, the industry's most comprehensive and objective assessment of rural hospital performance. It was one of only three rural hospitals in Illinois to receive the distinction in 2023. So my guess, as a former health system strategic planning expert as to why OSF is doing this, Peru looks a lot better on a map between Rockford and Peoria. OSF talks about maintaining access to care on the I-80 corridor, but in reality, it's the I-39 corridor that they want to own. And with the proposal as it's written, they have chosen to neglect the medical assets entrusted to them in 2012, when the community gave them our hospital for free, as John just spoke on. Let's look at the numbers to back this up. Peru will have eight intensive care unit beds, up from their current four today. Ottawa will lose all five of theirs. When reading this, I immediately flashback to when my father was at Ottawa Hospital in 2012, on a ventilator following a complication from his late-stage cancer battle, how my mom spent every minute there, driving home only to shower and take small breaks. Thank God Ottawa had that ICU at the time, because it would have created extra burden on her as a caregiver to drive from her home in Ottawa every day to Peru or elsewhere. This is true for many, as the data shows that Ottawa has operated peak census of five patients in their five beds since 2019, maybe longer, but that is as far back as in the data that I looked. This change will be immensely impactful to our community and will leave no ICU beds east of I-39 in LaSalle County. Peru will have 11 obstetric and labor beds, up from their current seven today. Ottawa will lose all 12 of theirs. As Ottawa is today, Peru will become the only birthing unit in a three-county region. Since 2021 is the last good year of data we have to compare Ottawa to Peru, we can consider Ottawa's peak census of nine patients and Peru's peak census of seven totaling to 16 patients. A simple enough calculation that shows an 11-bed OB unit may not do the trick for this planning region. I'm assuming that since OSF plans to operate Ottawa and Peru as two campuses, that the same OB providers will be credentialed for both sites, eliminating the concern for provider supply. So the question remains, why remove this service from Ottawa if the data shows that the 11 beds planned for Peru may not be adequate? Furthermore, it goes against the accolades that Ottawa's maternity center has received in the past few years, including a Blue Cross Blue Shield Center of Distinction, proving it to be a high-quality department. Peru will have 45 medical surgical beds, up from their current 38 today. Ottawa will have 12, 78% reduction from the 54 it has licensed today. For reference, a critical access hospital such as OFS sites in, OSF sites in Mendota and Princeton are around 25 beds, so less than half of a critical access hospital, which makes it laughable, but not funny, that OSF has planned only 12 beds for Ottawa. It all but solidifies that Ottawa will strictly serve as an outpatient department for the new St. Elizabeth Hospital in Peru. Again, I flashback to my father passing away on the fourth floor of Ottawa Hospital under the incredible care of the hospice team. The nurses were angels, the views to the river provided tranquility at a time that can only be understood if you've experienced it yourself. Will this type of hospice or end-of-life care be available in Ottawa in the 12-bed inpatient unit? Furthermore, who is staffing this unit? Will it be hospitalists or mid-level providers? It's a serious question.
Colleen, it's been five minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have more if anyone wants to add. I finish with, I hope you do take a vote.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? At a race here.
Sorry, I'll be real quick. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for letting me speak. My name's Kevin Dale. I'm the business manager at Labor's Local 393 out of Marcellus. I also sit on the Illinois Valley Building Trades Council. I'm here tonight to ask the city council members to table the resolution of opposition until both sides can formally sit down and talk through this. My members and myself, when we seen it announced in the paper, you know, we were very excited to have a project that big coming to Ottawa. A project that size doesn't happen in, well, in the last 10 years I've been business manager. It's a huge project for all the local trades and people to put to work. So again, I'm just asking the council to, you know, table the resolution. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peg Reagan, and I'm not at all prepared for this, except when you talked about your father. I want to talk about mine for a couple seconds. My father came here in 1966. He built the, what's known as the Sabic Plant out on Canal Road. It was the largest chemical, plastics chemical in the United States. And I found, after he died, a four-by-six black notebook, page one. My employees will have a brand-new hospital, and they will have good healthcare for their families. I don't need to say anymore. My father went on to be a hospital board chairman, and at that point, they did get a recognition on a national basis as a fine hospital. And then, following him, years later, I also was a hospital board chairman. Hospital in Ottawa is very important. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I'd like to hear the rest of the remarks that Colleen's prepared, remarks that looked like she was almost done and interested in the promotion being made for that.
I did for my remarks.
If you'd like to, in that case.
Okay. Acute mental illness is the only area that OSF has planned for growth in Ottawa, but we continue to be sold that this hospital will be right-sized for our community. I ask OSF to share with the public what percentage of patients admitted to their inpatient behavioral health services are actually from Ottawa. I have a feeling that more patients were admitted for stroke, heart attack, or respiratory issues than for mental health needs, but prove me wrong. We have questions about the state-of-the-art surgery center and what types of providers and procedures will actually be performed there. Is the robotic Mako plan to stay in Ottawa, orthopedics? What other state-of-the-art equipment will Ottawa have? Will they offer the same types of services as today? Since it's essentially an ambulatory surgery center and not a true hospital outpatient department in my mind, will the patient charges be lessened, or will OSF bill patients at HOPD rates? We have questions about ambulance transports and how those will work logistically and financially. Do patients pay two times if they are taken by ambulance to the Ottawa ED and then transferred to another facility by ambulance? Are transports covered financially by OSF if they are between Ottawa and Peru as part of the two-campus solution? How will OSF handle transports from Ottawa in regards to patients who do not want to stay in the OSF system? Will ambulances know what can and cannot be treated at Ottawa in the mini 12-bed hospital? These are questions OSF needs to answer if they expect us to get on board with these plans. We have questions about the virtual ED pilot at Peru, the pilot that they are creating there because of the number of patients who left without being seen at Ottawa's ED. And I'm sorry if I'm oversimplifying this, but doesn't that just mean we need more ED services in Ottawa? But finally, we have questions about why this all had to happen to begin with. In their own documents, OSF lists alternative to the plans they have proposed, plans that included a smaller but appropriately scaled hospital in Ottawa that maintained ICU, OB, and med-surg bed levels that meet the community's needs. Those plans range from 180 to 250 million, which is similar to the investment they are proposing to make in Ottawa with their current plans combined with the cost to purchase Peru and modernize it. So I do question why Peru seemed like such a shiny star after it failed and closed. As a representative for the Citizens for Healthcare in Ottawa group, I respectfully ask the Ottawa City Council to vote to oppose OSS project as it's written today. We ask OSF to take a pause and reflect on the wide-reaching impact of their proposed plans and come up with a better solution that does not alienate a community who has given them their trust to be a strong and steadfast partner. Thank you.
So I'm being told if OSF would like two minutes to speak, they can. It's up to you. It's up to you.
Then with that, let's move forward with Commissioner Eichelkraut's report.
Moved by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the bi-weekly salary payroll of April 26, 2024, in the amount of $531,206.19, be approved and warrants issued.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Barron, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the bi-monthly expense report dated May 7, 2024, showing expenses in the amount of $1,853,813.06, be approved and warrants issued.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Eichelkraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of two engagement agreements with Lipflee LLP for the fiscal year 2024 audits for the city and NCAP be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, is there anything else?
Just want to remind everybody, since we've got a big crowd, that there's a lot of festivals going on this year, music in the park and other things, that we, it'll be a lot of fun, a lot of things to do. So come out, enjoy yourselves.
Thank you. Onto Commissioner Gainer's report.
We have the report of the police chief for the month of April. Squad car calls, 1,495. Arrests, 402. Prisoners, 62. Sent-to-state institutions, zero. Sent-to-county jail, 11. Sent-to-juroronal creation, four. Central dispatch handled 825-911 calls. They also handled 3,969 administrative calls. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the report of police chief, Brandon Rolson, for the month of April 2024, be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
We have the report of the fire chief for the month of April. Number of bell alarms, two. Number of still alarms, 13. Activated alarms, 33. Number of medic calls, 279. Mutual aid, five. Number of patients, 234. Total calls for April was at 327. Total vehicle responses, 477. Total emergency overtime, 20. Structure loss was at $300,000. Contents loss at $100,000. Vehicle loss at zero, for a total loss for April of $400,000. Total non-residence bill for medical services was 18. Moved by Commissioner Gainer that the report of fire chief, Brian Bresner, for the month of April 2024, be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Barron, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Gainer that a resolution of opposition to OSF healthcare's plan for OSF St. Elizabeth Medical Center in Ottawa be adopted.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, discussion?
I, I'm inclined to make a motion to table this. If OSF can grant two requests, a public meeting here in the city of Ottawa with the council, and I say a public meeting, because in order to comply with the Open Meetings Act, it has to be a public meeting for all five of us to be together at the same time, and that meeting to take place within the next two weeks. I will table the motion until our next meeting, and that's it, if we can get these done.
I have a question on that part there. And I look at the point of view here, where I have hundreds of questions, okay? I know what she said, and I know what a lot of other people said. I'm looking at my own opinion. I've been at the Peru hospital before, I know what kind of it looks like when you walk in. It's not inviting like the Ottawa hospital. It's not even close, and I don't know how much money you want to spend over there to make it look like it's inviting. I've been to meetings over there. And another situation too, when Peru hospital is closed, you're sending people that are 90-years-old up to Mendota, putting them in a hospital, their family can't get to them, because they're in their 80s and 90s too. So what you're looking at, the city of Ottawa, you're looking at the idea here that you'll give us 12 beds. What happens when you ship somebody to Mendota from Ottawa and their family can't get to see them? I mean, to me, it's a financial situation. I understand where you're coming from, okay? But I have a lot more questions. I'll go with you if you want to speak to us, but I have a lot of questions.
And to answer, you do have to come up to the microphone to answer.
We welcome your questions, just like I gave you my card when we met a couple weeks ago. So again, we'd love to have that information ahead of time. I met Colleen right tonight. You know, I would say, we're here for the communities that we serve, and we're happy to try to explain it, but we're going to need to make sure that everybody has an open mind. That's all we're asking, and again, we're happy to come and explain it, but it's, we tried to present on the 16th of April, the healthcare challenges across America that was faced in our region with two hospitals closing.
Part of this two minutes, or? I thought you were supposed to answer yesterday.
Well, Dave, that's fine. We're welcome to do that. I mean, that's the problem, and it's like, we're happy to have a very open dialogue, and we want that. But we also need to be respectful to each other through the process. That's all I would ask.
And I would say the same. I mean, open minds have to be kept on both sides, not just the city's side. And, you know, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to anyway. Maybe if OSF would have contacted the city prior to making an announcement and giving us less than two hours' notice, maybe this all could have been alleviated a long time ago. I know, AJ, you sit there and shake your heads, but when corporations want to build facilities in the city, they come to the city first before there's any kind of an announcement made, to make sure that zoning is correct or building codes are correct, and so on and so forth. But OSF didn't do that. They felt that two hours' notice before a major announcement was plenty of time for the city to react. And don't get me wrong, I don't think anybody in this room is opposed to a new hospital. We all welcome a new hospital, but we want the hospital that the community needs. We don't want the scaled-down hospital that's proposed. So.
So, Tom, then, I'll ask, are you going to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion after I make one more statement. I want to read something from OSF's application to merge with Ottawa Regional Hospital, which was received at the Health Facilities Services Review Board on January 18, 2012. And it's on page 13, and it's titled "Access," if anybody wants to look at that document. Access for the Ottawa community will benefit by the proposed affiliation, as there will be no decrease in service scope or levels of care currently provided. Rather, the applicants anticipate the affiliation will support an increased clinical program scope through OSF's broader capabilities, subspecialization, and disease-based population management. In addition, the applicant certifies that the proposed affiliation will not result in restricting patient admissions, and that Ottawa's admissions policy will not become more restrictive. That's OSF's application in 2012, when they wanted to merge with Ottawa Regional Hospital. If there's no other comment, I'm ready to make a motion.
They decided that they're going to meet with us, they're correct?
They said they would meet with us. We'll set the meeting tonight or tomorrow. We can do that?
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table the OSF resolution until 5:21.
I'll hold my second.
Wait, Eichelkraut, second?
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
I will hold off my discussion until that time.
Okay. Anything from this side of the room?
I have nothing more than what Tom said, to not repeat all of it.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
And I'm almost afraid to ask this now, anything else you'd like to add?
I have nothing else tonight, but just, I reiterate that the meeting has to be public so we can all attend, and that means the public would be allowed to come also, but that's the way it has to be to comply with the Open Meetings Act.
Very good. And now, on to Commissioner Pearson's report.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that an ordinance authorizing the sale of multiple items of personal property, which includes vehicles and other equipment, be passed and approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
All right.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that the quote received from Imogenation LLC, in the amount of $19,236.50, for Allen Park's new shelter, be approved and paid for from the General Corporate Fund.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut.
Since we do have a crowd, we did get a donation from South Ottawa Township to cover the shelter.
Right. Very good. Roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution appropriating $890,000 worth of motor fuel tax funds be adopted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution requesting permission from the Illinois Department of Transportation for a highway permit to allow work in the right-of-way Route 23 be adopted.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Barron, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that the low bid received from Reese Construction Company in the amount of $298,204, for the 2024 curb replacements, be approved and paid for from the General Corporate Fund.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that the quote received from Visiting Construction, in the amount of $953,266, for the Allen Park Improvement Project, be approved and paid for from grant funds and the General Corporate Fund.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that the city clerk be authorized to advertise for bids for the Peck Park Playground improvements. Bids will be received until Tuesday, May 21, 2024, at 10 o'clock AM.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Barron, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing else today.
Okay. Onto Commissioner Barron's report.
Moved by Commissioner Barron that change order number one, from Connolly Excavating Incorporated, in the increased amount of $3,271.50, for the 2022 water main replacement project, be approved and paid for from the Water Fund.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Eichelkraut.
Just an update on a bill.
Perfect. Roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Anything you'd like to add?
Yes, we started the water main replacement project this week. We're replacing water mains on Elm Lane and on Sanger and on the west side. It'll take a couple months. We, hopefully, the residents in that area will have to put up with a slight inconvenience for a couple months, but at the end of it, we're going to have nice, good water in those neighborhoods.
Well, one thing that I'll add to that is I got a Facebook message today from a resident who was completely satisfied with the work that was being done, how clean the work was, how respectful the people were being to the neighbors. They all had a system on how to get in and out of their driveways, and as Tom Duttlinger and Brent can tell you, those are not things that we get often when there's construction. So it was really nice to hear that, and so, good job to everyone involved.
We try to minimize the inconvenience.
Onto my report.
We have the report of the registrar for the month of April. There were 57 birth certificates issued and 35 death certificates. Certified copies were issued with fees totaling $1,815. Moved by Mayor Hasty that the report of registrar, Shelly L. Monks, for the month of April 2024, be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that the report of the parking administration department, showing fines collected of $2,185, for the month of April 2024, be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
We have the report of the building official for the month of April. There were 10 building permits issued with fees totaling $6,331. Total number of onsite building inspections, 92. There were two demolition permits for $75, one sign permit for $50, two pool permits for $75, 22 fence permits for $1,100, four new business registrations for $400, 25 general contractor licenses issued for $2,500, 16 electrical licenses renewed for $2,400, three new electrical licenses issued for $450.[1493.73] There were 14 electrical permits for $700. Total number of onsite electrical inspections: 34. We had nine people take our electrical exam for $1,395. Our construction coordinator did a total of 132 inspections, and our code enforcement officer did 126 inspections, for a total of permits and licenses of 57 with fees collected of $11,776. Moved by Mayor Hasty that the report of building official Matthew W. Stafford for the month of April 2024 be received and placed on file.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Barron, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that an ordinance amending Section 74-206 of the Admissible Code of the City of Ottawa, LaSalle County, Illinois, regarding compensatory storage be passed and approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer. This has to do with how much storage is being scooped out and replaced when someone is doing any kind of movement in anywhere that's a floodplain. Currently, the city of Ottawa has a 1.5 to 1 offset, and we're reducing it just so that it's 1 to 1 that is still compliant with FEMA, and it's going to allow us to move forward on a number of different projects.
Question. Does that do anything to our flood rating?
That alone does not. It can with other things. It's a multi-tiered grade. That along with other things could, but by itself, no.
So at least, one other question here. Is it just the city's capable of doing this now, or is this for everybody now?
It's for everybody.
Because I want to make it equal for everybody. And as far as the flood rating's concerned, since we get insurance from over there that you probably know more about it than anybody, it doesn't really help your insurance at all. Either way, whether you got it or you don't have it. I'm just saying, it doesn't help your insurance, okay?
Yeah, we should stipulate that, yes, it is that that ordinance change would be in effect for anyone. It's not just a change for city of Ottawa property. Roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that an ordinance amending Section 2-71 of the Admissible Code of the City of Ottawa, LaSalle County, Illinois, regarding salary increases for the mayor and commissioners effective May 1, 2027, which has been on file for public inspection since April 16, 2024, be passed and approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson. I will say, just as it was, I'll reiterate that this doesn't go into effect until the next administration. Also, it has been 16 years since there was any increase of any kind for any of these positions, and so that's why we thought it was more than due time to give just a tiny little bump for that next administration. Any other comments? Roll call.
Nay.
Eichelkraut.
Nay.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement between the city of Ottawa and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for a rebuild downtown of Main Street's capital grant for the amphitheater be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Aye.
Commissioner Eichelkraut. Finally, everyone, this is something that I think everyone can agree is a very good thing, and we're finally at the moment where we have it, and it's being placed on file, and so we can start looking and putting together that amphitheater for everyone to enjoy. Roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a public art agreement between the city of Ottawa and Jeremy Johnson for a mural at 227 through 229 West Main Street be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Barron. This is with a local artist, so it is a different project than what the brush with history had been. And it's going to be on the side of 229, which is in that parking area on Main Street there. And the intent with something like this is that, as Jeremy Johnson knows, the intent doesn't have to be permanent. It's being put on a frame, and so if three, five, however many years, if the city wants to auction that piece off and put a different piece up or something like that, it allows for there to just be revolving art within our community. Roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement for Amanda Lynch as Recreation Director be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for sale between the city of Ottawa and Simply Modern Homes LLC for the property located at 513 St. George Street be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract of sale between the city of Ottawa and Simply Modern Homes LLC for property located at 819 Canal Street be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract of sale between the city of Ottawa and Augustin Leon Montez for property located at 230 Anita Drive be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Wow. Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for sale between the city of Ottawa and Augustin Leon Montez for property located at 221 D Leon Street be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.